I'd like to call the June 5th, uh, meeting of the Oak Ridge Town Council to order. First item is the invocation with the distinct privilege of having Anna Klassfeldt provide the invocation. Oh, sorry. I'd like to call the October, uh, June 5th, meeting of the Oak Ridge Town Council to order. First item of business is the invocation with the distinct pleasure of Anna Klassfeldt to give the invocation. Please stand as you're able.
Father, kind Father in Heaven, we are so grateful that we can be gathered together at this council meeting. We ask that thou bless our councilmen and women as they, um, seek to, uh, understand the needs of this town, that they may have wisdom and knowledge to execute those plans that they have. We ask a blessing on our firefighters and our police officers and the parks and recreation and those who serve this community. We ask, Father in Heaven, a blessing on our military. We are so grateful for the service and protection they give us and others around this world. We are grateful also for this country that we live in. Bless our President of the United States. And we are grateful for our patriot ancestors who have sacrificed so much for us to be able to enjoy the land of freedom that we live in. And we say these things, Father in Heaven, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it spans one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. At least one item I'd like to ask for to be added to the, our town attorney has asked for also a closed session to discuss a legal matter. Uh, and also the minutes were released a bit late, so if anyone wants to remove that, that'd be okay too. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion. We, uh, approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry.
Are we including the minutes or not?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good, thank you. Uh, motion is made and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, first item is... Approval of minutes, thank you. After all of that, yes.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve the May 1st, uh, regular meeting of minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, resolution proclamation announcements. Proclamation celebrating the 250th birthday of the United States Army, whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress established the United States Army, marking the birth of America's military and the beginning of its fight for freedom and independence. And whereas for nearly 250 years, the Army has stood as a guardian of liberty, providing security to our nation, maintaining readiness and defense, and promoting peace worldwide. And whereas the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of Army soldiers, veterans, and their families have ensured the safety and prosperity of our nation and the freedoms we cherish. And whereas the United States Army remains steadfast in its mission to serve and defend, building strong ties with local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our nation. And whereas the town of Oak Ridge recognizes the Army's pivotal role in shaping our nation's history, security, and freedom, now therefore I, by virtue of the authority vested me as Mayor of the town of Oak Ridge, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2025, as United States Army Day in Oak Ridge, and urge all our citizens to observe this day, dated this 5th day of June 2025. And I believe we have represented from the, uh, DAR. Would you like to come up and receive this and we can take some pictures? Oh, we have two.
Hang on, wait for Jim.
Yep.
We gotta get posed back in the back.
Cut the tie.
Oh, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, thank you.
And I just want to note that Anna is the Regent of the Guilford Battle Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Thank you for being here with us.
I'm DS, we're from...
And next we have a report from the Guilford County Sheriff's Office, so happy to have you. Please come up. Are you ready to give us a report or not? You were just, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you were just here. Okay, I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to, I did not mean to put you on the spot. Uh, we do have the crime statistics in the back. If anyone from council has any questions you'd like to ask, we can definitely ask them. And he, uh, we're putting him on the spot a little bit, but, uh, anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Excellent.
That is great to hear. So what he said was that the security cameras in the park have apparently reduced the break-ins, the number of break-ins at the park.
Thank you.
A hundred percent, that's fantastic.
Appreciate that.
Yay.
Yes. And we have the report from the Oak Ridge Fire Department. I believe you also have some, uh, awards to give out at the same time.
Good evening, uh, my name's Captain Hill, Oak Ridge Fire Department. Uh, been asked to give y'all the monthly report. Uh, for the month of May, Oak Ridge Fire Department ran 85 calls, um, including three working structure fires that we assisted with Cornersville and Colfax and Summerfield. Uh, we also had 919 total training hours. Um, spring safety checklist, I've got a whole list that I won't give to y'all, but I'm just gonna read the top one. Uh, make sure that everybody checks your carbon monoxide and smoke detectors. That's all I have for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hice.
which are, uh, the fire department's, the fire department's, uh, Strength and Honor Fund Scholarship Award for this year. The four recipients, two of which are with us tonight. This scholarship fund was established and endowed by the Rosoli family and friends in memory of their son Lance Corporal Andrew David Rosoli, U.S. Marine Corps. Andrew was killed in action as a member of the United States Marine Corps while engaged in combat near Nassirwa, Salam, Iraq. Andrew's life desire after serving in the Marine Corps was to become a firefighter like his friends in Oak Ridge, uh, at Oak Ridge Fire and Rescue Company. Andrew gave the ultimate sacrifice for service to our country, and this fund honors his memory by helping those in need who are serving in the community. His legacy of strength and honor serves us all by our service to others. The scholarship committee consisted of Mr. Roland Rosoli and his wife Sarah Nelson for the fund board. Uh, we had, uh, Councilman Ann Snyder from the town of Oak Ridge. I, I participated as, uh, one of the board of directors from the fire department. Uh, Chief Gibson was also there. And after evaluating the applicants and the financial ability of the fund, the committee recommended awarding four scholarships this year totaling $5,500 to Logan Bryant, Wilson Anders, Alexander Howerton, and Charlie Mills. Logan Bryant will continue to attend Appalachian State University and pursue her higher education goal of a degree in healthcare management. Wilson Anders, who's with us tonight, will continue to attend the Integrative Community Studies and Beyond Academics Program at the University of North Carolina in Greensboro. Alexander Howerton will continue to attend Southern Wesleyan University. And Charlie Mills, who's also with us tonight, will attend the GTCC Fire Academy. So, uh, Andrew's dream of service was cut short, but due to these awards, his desire to, to serve will be carried on. And if you want more information, you could, could connect with, uh, Oak Ridge Fire Department and Rescue Company, just next door to us at 8325 Linville Road here in Oak Ridge. If I could ask the two young men, Wilson and Charlie, to come up, please, and I'll give you your award. Oh, excuse me, Alex. Oh, sorry, Alex. Okay, so, here we are. First of all, Wilson, here's your award. Congratulations. And, uh, I'll give you a copy of what I just read, so you'll have that for your scrapbook. And Alex? This is yours. And I'll keep the paper clips and, uh, shake your hand, and then I'll give you this as well. Let's, uh, give a warm applause to these two young men and the two that aren't out here. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay, the next item is consideration and adoption of the budget. I'll turn it over to our town manager for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, it's my pleasure, uh, to present the proposed Town of Oak Ridge Fiscal Year 2025-26 Budget for your consideration. Uh, the budget was released at the council meeting last month, has been out for public review, uh, on the website and also, uh, hard copies here at Town Hall. Uh, the budget was prepared with considerable input and oversight from the Finance Committee and the Finance Officer, uh, Sam Anders, as well as various committees and town citizens. Three meetings of the Finance Committee concluded with a favorable recommendation of the budget. The proposed fiscal year 2526 budget funds longstanding commitments to the development of a municipal water system, expands sidewalk and trail connections, and investigates and implements additional recreational offerings. The town's measured and strategic investments in the provision of essential and discretionary services reflect the town's commitments to the demands of a growing population. Several major construction projects are complete or are nearing completion, including Heritage Farm Park Phase 1, the Farmhouse Community Center, and the Veterans Honor Green. Construction of an elevated water tank will be ongoing in the next fiscal year, and funding is in place for construction of a 3.2-mile water main on Oak Ridge Road to bring an additional municipal water source to Oak Ridge. The town is also laying the groundwork for future infrastructure by planning and designing a water line that would serve the town core and a new sidewalk to provide linkages to the town core for neighborhoods east of NC 68. The budget supports staff as they continue to provide exceptional service and guidance to the town's 11 standing boards and committees, as well as other project-specific working groups, ad hoc committees, consultants, and contractors. Uh, staff will continue to maintain exceptional parks facilities, provide outstanding citizen service, and to manage the increasingly demanding day-to-day responsibilities of a growing town. Other funded organizations and events include the Oak Ridge Youth Association, the Music in the Park Series, and popular annual events such as Ridge Fest, Light Up the Night, Heritage Day, and other holiday celebrations. On the revenue side, through steady and well-planned growth, the town anticipates a 4.6% increase in revenue, including property and sales tax collections, interest earnings, revenue from the ABC Store, as well as other formula-based state distributions. Uh, with two new facilities, the Heritage Farm Park Athletic Fields and the, uh, Community Center, and, uh, combined with new facility rental fees that put us more in line with our neighboring jurisdictions, parks revenue is forecast to increase by over 50%. A grant revenue of over $8 million will be allocated in separate capital project ordinances to fund construction of water infrastructure, including the water tower and the water main. Whereas revenues, uh, are projected to increase 4.6%, operating expenses are projected to increase 4.4% in the proposed budget, uh, even with the additional facility maintenance and administrative responsibilities that staff will have. Um, and I give credit to our Finance Committee, the town committees, uh, and especially to town staff for streamlining and pairing proposed expenses down to the essentials. Uh, the budget proposes no change to the property tax rate of eight cents, which was adopted in, originally adopted in 2017. Uh, the large capital, um, expenses of the water tank and water main are both fully funded by grants, and other capital investments are more modest in this fiscal year. Um, and therefore the budget anticipates $20,000 in net revenue to the town. This year's proposed budget therefore maintains the current tax rate, invests in needed capital improvements, funds an increasing array of services, and also maintains adequate reserves. Uh, the budget message that's in your packet contains more detail on the various, um, projects and, um, administrative tasks that are funded in the budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any initial questions before we open it for public comment?
None for me, thank you.
If not, this is a public hearing, which means there'll be 20 minutes for people who wish to speak in favor, and 20 minutes for people who wish just in opposition. If both sides present, there'll be five minutes worth of rebuttal, uh, for each party. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the budget? Yes, sir.
John Jenkins, 6700 Ashton Park Drive. I've served on the Finance Committee, and I think, uh, this is one of the strongest finance committees that we've had. I thought in the past we had very strong ones, but they were very diligent in what they did. They went through the budget line item by line item as normal, and I support the budget. The budget message, I'm impressed with Bruce and the staff are keep for maintaining the, uh, expenses and cutting expenses wherever they can. So I am proud to stand behind this budget and recommend support of it by the council.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else who should speak in favor of the budget?
Hello, I'm Stuart Mace, 1810 Wildfern Drive. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee, and as we mentioned last time that we're here when it first introduced, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, uh, for citizens who I believe this is a sound, um, budget proposal that has been, um, created. Um, probably the first thing is that it, we are offering a strategic investment in long-term infrastructure with no increase in taxes. So let me say that again. Strategic investment, long-term infrastructure with no increase in tax. Tax rate remains unchanged as it has since 2017, and we're providing, um, the foundation for some pretty major infrastructure projects with the, uh, water tank, the water main, and leveraging some, uh, really good, uh, use of grants as well. So I think this will, um, prepare for our growth for the future and not burden our taxpayers further. Uh, second, we have, um, create a budget that has a strong emphasis on community development and quality of life enhancements. Obviously the second park, the crown jewel of the town, the park system. Now we have essentially two parks. Um, we had the Farmhouse Community Center that, um, has been completed during that time, and all of these projects, uh, uh, go back to, uh, the long-range, uh, master plans that have been in place, so we're implementing that as well. And then finally, I believe the, the budget, um, is a good example of responsible fiscal management, a big growth. I mean, you, you have to be under a rock if you don't think this place and around it is growing. Um, and we are projecting about a 4.6% increase in revenues while keeping the operating expenses, uh, below that to 4.4%, so there's still a little bit of a, um, um, surplus there, uh, with that. Uh, we're also gonna be able to generate some additional revenue with the, um, what we're doing with the parks for more rentals and so forth. So I believe, um, it's what John was saying before, the committee is formed of a number of citizens. Uh, John's been involved with it for a number of years, and it's a process that's working, getting business professionals in the community to provide their insight, uh, to help with the great work that the staff is doing. So I give it my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak in favor of the budget? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the period of time with anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the budget. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the budget? Hearing none, I'll actually, there's no need for rebuttals, so I'll close the public comment section. Um, we have done it in two ways. Sometimes we'll do a motion, sometimes we'll ask for questions. Uh, either one is fine. Someone wanna, like to make a motion to get this started, or?
Make a motion that we approve the 2025-2026 budget.
All right, it's a second. Okay. Mr. Greason, you made the motion, so first opportunity for discussion is yours. No comment. Mr. Stone?
Uh, no comments.
Mr. Harton?
Just, uh, thanks to the Finance Committee and the staff for putting on this all together. It's a great process. Uh, it, uh, the leadership of the team has been magnificent, and everything went pretty smoothly, so, uh, thanks to all.
Mr. Snyder?
I never have no comment. Um, I, I fully support this budget. I think looking back over my time on council and as mayor, we have accomplished a lot over the last eight years, and many of the things that we planned for in those last eight years have come to fruition, are coming to fruition. Uh, several major projects which Mr. Bruce mentioned, including Heritage Farm Park and the Farmhouse Community Center, are being completed both on budget, although not on time due to contractor delays. Uh, and the Veterans Honor Green is another success that I think most of you have seen, but it was under budget and on time, which was terrific. Um, we raised, as Bill pointed out, significant grant amounts in past years, and although we haven't been able to secure additional grant funding this year, we remain hopeful for state, money from state and county sources. And, um, all of this, together with the slight increase in revenues, is allowing us to move forward, as has been said, but can't be said too often, without a tax increase. So that means our tax rate here in Oak Ridge remains at eight cents per $100 valuation of your property. Everything else on your property tax bill is from the county and the fire department. So sometimes you look at big increases and you think, oh, well, that's all from the town. No. Uh, about 70% of your tax bill goes to the county, and about 14% of it goes to the fire department. I think I have that right, or maybe that's their tax rate. Anyway, um, I did some research today on the North Carolina Department of Revenue site. Uh, they have a spreadsheet on statewide tax rates for all the towns and cities in North Carolina. We are the 11th, we have the 11th lowest tax rate in all of North Carolina. It's simply amazing, given the high quality of life that we enjoy here in our beautiful town. It's also a testament to the value of those strategic investments that Stuart mentioned. Uh, we continue to make those in our community this year. We're doing more with, um, sidewalks, street, street improvements, uh, intersection improvements, and all sorts of things. At the same time, importantly, we're continuing to build up our reserves so that we can take on new projects, such as Phase 2 of our new park. As always, I encourage residents to take a look at the budget message, contact any one of us or staff if you have questions. The spreadsheet may be confusing, but the budget message, uh, is crystal clear. Thank you so much.
Okay. Um, one of, one of the comments I've started mentioning lately is the easy stuff's over with. Um, you know, we're a growing town now. We're facing the, the, uh, issues that a growing town has. We're also being put a lot of pressure on because of the growth of the area around us. Uh, if you follow the news articles, there was a news article in News and Record this morning, uh, the county and the town, uh, the county in Greensboro and, and, uh, the state are looking at a company that may bring 10,000 jobs to the airport. That's in addition to the jobs that, uh, Boom is bringing to the area. We also have the Toyota plant in southeast Green, uh, Greensboro, southeast Guilford. Uh, so the area around us is under tremendous growth, so we have, uh, challenges to face there. Uh, we do have a new park. Uh, it'll be the first year we have that new park, so we will have to, uh, evaluate exactly how much that park's gonna cost us to run. Uh, so we're gonna have to keep a good eye on our costs, uh, because there's gonna be increasing pressure. There's increasing pressure because there's more things that people in town want us to do. Uh, so we need to take a clear look at all that stuff. Uh, as part of the Phase 2 thing, we will be doing a survey. So it's important that the residents make it clear what they want, because everything they want comes with a cost. So we need to make sure that everybody understands that if you want X, it's gonna cost you Y. So, um, one of the other things I usually include is our tax rate is fairly low. If you think about it, on a half a million dollar house, uh, it's $400. You are not able to get a membership to the YMCA for that. So in effect, you get, uh, kind of a, a membership in a, in a, uh, uh, we have a sports facility, you have the park, so for $400, I grant you, it depends on the price of your house, but for a half a million dollar house, it's $400, for a million dollar house, it's 800. I think even at 800, it's tough to get a Y membership for 800. So, so I think you're, the biggest question you need to be asking is, are you getting value for your taxes? And from my perspective, I, I feel we are getting value from our taxes. That's why I support the budget. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And again, great job by staff, Finance Committee. It, it's, it's always an interesting exercise to observe. Thank you. All right, now we have the first public comments. Any community organizations, yeah, Oak Ridge Military Academy?
Good evening. Oh, yeah, it works. My name is Angie Williams. I'm the Director of Alumni and Development for Oak Ridge Military Academy, 2713 Oak Ridge Road. Came by for a couple of reasons. One, we are getting ready to start our summer camp and summer school program. Our first camp is two weeks long. It starts June 22nd and runs from the 22nd to July 3rd. July 6th is our next summer camp. These are adventure camps. We both have day and boarding options for those. The second camp runs from July 6th through, I think it's July 25th, maybe. I don't remember. The summer school runs the entirety of that. So it's not just making upgrades that they may not have done well with. It's also an opportunity to get ahead. We have both middle school and high school classes, and so we offer a variety of subjects. Please feel free to get in touch with the academy. There are still openings in the first summer camp, and there are still openings over summer school. The other thing that I wanted to let you guys know was that we are hosting our very first skeet shoot on August 9th. It is a new fundraising idea that we are working with. A lot of our alum and community members are either gun and suit enthusiasts, they're in the military, they're in law enforcement, and we have never done anything to, at least in my time in Orma, to kind of encourage that. So it is a family-friendly event. Of course, there's a price point for it. We are doing it Shane's Clay Shoot in Summerfield. It's not quite right. Shane's Sporting Clay. There you go. Thank you. I thought I didn't quite have it right. So this is our first time doing this event, so we'll see how it turns out. I have a limited space for this because we're keeping our occupancy to 40, max. So the quicker you sign up, the easier it'll be. As long, you can bring your children, as long as you, their parent, are there to work them through, that is not a problem. Shane's also has all of the safety equipment and guns for rent if you need your, if you don't want to bring your own. The academy is lucky, we only need to pay for the skeet and the ammo. So this makes a really nice opportunity for us to clear out some money for the incoming school year. That is the things that are happening right now at the academy. Feel free to come by. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much for reporting, Gregory.
Thank you.
Now we open for general public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, just come up, state your name and address, and three minutes is yours.
Barbara Engel, 8524 Rosedale Drive. Don't laugh. I didn't laugh. I saw it, yeah. Flag Day, Saturday, June 14th, and DAR, Daughters of American Revolution, the Guilford Battle Chapter, is going to hold a Flag Day celebration here at our amphitheater in the town park. And we invite everybody to come, and we'd like to thank the staff, Parks and Rec, and Brock and his staff for being very kind and helpful with helping us organize this. So it's going to be at 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and we're going to also celebrate the Army's 250th anniversary, too. So please come out and help support us, please.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Ben Walraven, 5931 Pepper Road. I'd like to comment on the ongoing concern regarding the Transco pipeline raised in several town council meetings. There have been repeated requests for the town council to adopt a position of being opposed to the expansion due to safety concerns and because a pipeline expansion would offer no benefits to the citizens of Oak Ridge. As has been pointed out, the town of Oak Ridge has no regulatory or assigned authority over the pipeline. Ultimately, or the ultimate authority rests with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. It decides to approve or disapprove the project. Regarding local environmental concerns, the State of North Carolina's Department of Environmental Quality, as well as Wildlife Resources Commission, must issue the necessary permits for the project to proceed. A draft of the environmental assessment of the project is expected later in 2025, and the final decision is anticipated in 2026. The proposed pipeline will bring increased natural gas supplies to Davidson County. This is the Lexington-Thomasville area, Iredelle County, which is a Statesville and Moore, Statesville and Mooresville County area, or city area, and Cleveland County, which is the Shelby and Kings Mountain area. From what I've been able to learn from my research, it appears we'll be helping fellow Tar Heels. And I would hate to think that our town's position would be one that is against other areas of the state, especially when you consider how many state grants our town has been awarded over the past few years. I had the pleasure of waking up this morning by enjoying a natural gas-powered hot shower and a hot breakfast cooked down my natural gas-powered range. People in other parts of the state have a pipeline running through their communities that deliver gas to our area, and they accept the fact that this is necessary for the good of the whole. I thank them for that. In closing, my intent is not to diminish the concerns that others have raised. Rather, it is to put in perspective the nature of how a society has to deal with the concept of risks. Essentially, there's risk in most everything you do, from driving on our roads, talking, taking prescribed medicines, flying on airplanes, swimming in the ocean. To me, the risk of the pipeline project is acceptable, given the oversight Transco must follow legal regulations, approval of permits, and dictated ongoing maintenance regimes. And based on this, I would like to ask the council to forego any effort to take a stand against this project and to continue to focus on matters where your authority makes a clear impact on North, on Oak Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak in favor? I mean, not favor, anyone who wish to make public comments? If not, we'll close out the, oh, yes. Typically, we only allow once.
I'm only allowed one. Barbara Engel, 8524 Rosedale Drive. I would just like to follow on with Ben's remarks and totally agree with him and support his statements. I also have lived with the pipeline running through my side yard for 23 years and have no problem with Williams and Company. They've been very great partners to deal with. So I don't like that all these outside forces have come into our community to rile everybody up. So I don't think the town should get involved either. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak? If not, we'll close out the first public comment section and move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Actually, only one item for your consideration this evening, and that's the appointment of Emily Lockridge as an alternate to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Is there a motion to have consideration approval of the appointment of Emily Lockridge?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
I had several long conversations with Ms. Lockridge, and I think she would be a great addition. She's well-qualified, and she would be a great addition to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Any other comments?
Emily and her husband Michael are neighbors. They actually live in a home that they restored that's been there for at least 180 years. So I think she has a, she has a desire to preserve some of the buildings that our town certainly enjoys, and I think she'd be great on this committee.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. New Business, Consideration Adoption of Ordinance 2025-02, Tex-Min, Making Change at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Ordinance. Is there any comments you'd like to present?
Just simply summarize the two changes. One, the first is upon expiration of the Oak Ridge Youth Association Usage Agreement, the dedicated Oak Ridge Youth Association President position on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will expire, as will the town council's ex officio position on the ORYA Board of Directors. Part of the effort that council has advanced to remove influence on either board. And so as part of that, we're removing that dedicated seat on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and replacing it simply with a regular appointment. The second is that since the establishment of the Mountains to Sea Trail Committee in 2018, that committee has taken over the planning, the long-term and short-term planning of trails in the town of Oak Ridge, and therefore we're proposing to remove trail planning as one of the requirement, or one of the responsibilities of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Any initial questions? If not, is there a motion to approve? Go ahead. If someone has a question, go ahead.
The Trails Committee, we're talking about...
Could you pull your microphone closer?
The Trails Committee, we're talking about the trails and connecting corridors. Anything that's, anything that's in the, outside of the town parks, et cetera, will be with the Mountains to Sea Committee.
That's correct.
Okay.
Might have heard a question on this end?
Yeah, and just piggybacking on Jim's comment here. So the trails that are within the parks are the responsibility of Parks and Rec, and those that are outside the town park would be the responsibility of the Mountains to Sea Trail Committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other initial questions? If not, is there a motion to approve or deny the change?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Greason, you made the motion.
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
Have all the information I need. Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
My question was answered.
Ms. Snyder?
This is a simple, sensible update. I'm glad we're making it. Thank you.
I have no comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Consideration Approval of Renewal of Contract with Our Town Attorney. Anything you'd like to present, either of you?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was in my memo to council. I have nothing to add to that.
Are there any clarifying questions that council would like to ask? If not, is there a motion to approve or deny the renewal of the town attorney contract?
Make a motion that we approve the contract renewal approval for the town attorney.
Is there a second? Mr. Stone, you made the motion. You are free to make initial comments, if any.
No, I think that we're exceedingly well-represented by Mr. Thomas, and I have absolute no issues with the contract.
Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Mr. Harton?
Nothing but praise for Mr. Thomas.
Ms. Snyder, I'm sorry.
That's fine. One of the great things about Mr. Thomas, in addition to his just excellent and essential legal services to our town, is his long history with our town is an important asset that he brings to the continued work with us here in Oak Ridge. Thank you for all that you do.
Just to reinforce what's been said, I mean, he does an excellent job for us. He always puts the town's interests at first. He is a solid legal counsel, and we appreciate his long service, and hopefully we'll have him for a long time to come. The motion's been made and seconded, and any further discussion? If not, is there, I'm sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, next, my financial report. I think you have a full plate for us?
Yes, sir. It's not working? Okay. We'll try. Something electronics got to go crazy with me. I got a brand-new radio, and I didn't explode it or short it out, so everybody's fascinated by that. So I'll stand back here. Okay, yeah, we've got the normal list, and I've got a budget adjustment for some housekeeping, and then we've got the audit contract from the public auditing firm. For activity, everyone should have gotten a copy of the financials. Overall, as we normally do, strong financial position, low liabilities for the current month. We have had expense, excuse me, let me flip back a page here. We had revenues of $100,371.11, and we had expenditures of $248,762.17, so a decrease in fund balance of $148,392.06. Normal for this time of year, expenses continue on. The tax revenue stream and collections is normally slow this time of year because property taxes have all been primarily collected, and I'll have a little comment on that here in a moment. Schedule one, you can see, we've got the money spread between Truist, Bank of Oak Ridge, and Piedmont Federal. Then you've got the list of all the, all the income, all the expenditures, and all the subsidiary schedules. We're going to receive an ACH wire transfer remitting $993.45 for property tax. That's on everything other than motor vehicles. Motor vehicles, $11,613.49. That is normal for this time of year, in that the property taxes, as I've stated, is low because they have collected almost everything. We have a very, very good collection ratio here in Oak Ridge, and the payment due dates have already passed, so this is actually a good thing. Most of our citizen repays the taxes either early or on time, and we don't have a lot of bad debt or late taxes on the books. The county has also been doing quite a bit of work on updating some of their systems. I'd spoken in previous months about some of the issues regarding the assignment of fire tax, the assignment of motor vehicle taxes due to some software errors. The monies were not being correctly allocated between the proper taxing authorities, and in some cases, updated values were not being sent down to Raleigh from Guilford County. Primarily, they have corrected this. The proof in the pudding is the fine detail that I get on the fire district, which encompasses the town. We've collected 122% of the estimated motor vehicle tax that the county had in their budget that was being allocated to us. The neighbors are down about 15% each. So it's pretty evident they've got everything straightened out, and I think we'll be in good shape going forward. The monthly sales tax, property tax dispersments, we've gotten fairly normal. Percentage-wise, those are running a hair low. This is fairly normal. We've seen a little bit of a softening. We've seen a softening in the excise tax that we just received. This is the annual beer and wine excise tax, and this is excise tax collected on beer and wine sold to grocery store, grocery stores, and other outlets such as convenience stores. That is decreased for the first time in my memory. Also, as we had talked about in past months, ABC distribution was down a little bit. So we're seeing this trend with a little softening in some of the consumption items and some of the sales taxes. However, we did have, you know, solid waste disposal tax came in, facility rental, special events revenue, other park revenues, tap fees and water usage fees, all were in normal realms. Our investments, and the banks were monitoring those, were monitoring the best rates we can try to get. Staff support as normal, ARPA reporting, SCIF grant reporting, the CIP process, final closeout on the Pardeff, work on the water system, budget ordinance preparation. And we had the fun time of renewing the workers' comp insurance and the property and casualty insurance. Good folks to work with. The portal is from hell. Ashley and I worked about 14 days trying to get access so that we could actually renew all of those. We anticipate workers' comp actually decreasing. They have softened the rates on... They have softened the rates on that last year. They softened the rates again this year. Property and casualty right now is up a little bit, and I suspect it will go up more because the, in this next year's renewal, the additional amenities at the park, additional amenities with the community center, all of those will be going on to the policy. As usual, at the end of June, we will be doing the check on all of the assets of the town, and we will be reporting, as we finalize everything, we'll be reporting that and checking it against the property casualty list. And by that, there are certain things that are of low value that we can't cost justify having the property casualty insurance on it. Other things we will have on there, and certain special things, like, for instance, we've got a little bit of fine arts coverage for a piece of art, a few other things like that. We always go through that during the asset inventory and verify that all our coverages are correct and that they're happy with the values we've got and we're happy with the values they've assigned. But that's underway. The...I'll skip down to the item. It's not listed. Couple of things here. First, I wanted to call your attention, ahead of my report section, is the contract received from Forest Mazers for the audit for this next year. We are required to have an annual audit. There is a decrease, as I've talked about in past years, in the number of firms doing governmental audits. The State Treasurers Department is working on some adjustments to try to streamline this process and make it a little easier. One of the things they've done this year is they have moved the deadline out from the end of October, which has traditionally caused a massive scramble, to December the 31st. However, with that stated, we do have a commitment from Forest Mazers to go ahead and start earlier this year because, as we have grown, it's taking a little longer in time to get us to start more so in July than in late August or September. Also, we have got to have the single audit this year. We managed to do the alternative last year and save some money. This year, with the projects we've got, it looks like we are going to have to have the single audit. In that area, there is some movement on the federal level to increase the limits. Now, we've already got these projects underway. I do not think we will qualify under the new limits, assuming they're passed, but they are moving those up because they're recognizing the cost of inflation and the volume of work that's needing to be done. A lot of municipalities, as in North Carolina, you have to have a full-blown audit, so there's a lot of other safety. So the feds are looking at moving those limits up. We wait to see if that's going to pass. They're still got to go through all the regulators, but I'm aware of it. Forest Mazers is aware of it. In here, they do have in quote, in there, the one audit, excuse me, single audit that's required to be added in. So I'm asking for approval to execute this contract, and then I would sign it, and we would go ahead and start scheduling for the audit.
We can get that out of the way right now. Any questions about the contract for audit accounts?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And you made the first motion?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
No, I think that every year, Sam and his group does a fantastic job and works hard to make sure that everything is correct, and I'm certain that this year is going to be the same, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
I agree with Mr. Stone.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, good points, and I'm glad we're getting a jump on it. That's the sooner the better.
Yep, we'll do it.
I'm here. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The eyes have it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I need you to sign the contract at the end of the meeting, and I'll sign, and we'll get it out first thing in the morning to them.
Excellent.
The last couple of things. First is the housekeeping piece. This is that I put at your workstations. This is a final budget amendment for 2425, and I say that with tongue in cheek. We may have a little, a few more tweaks, but as of right now, I'm requesting this. This total's $71,599. We are increasing some expense amounts, decreasing the water management fee on that. We're adjusting some of the water expenses and the split of income, as well as we're funding this by reducing salaries at Park, which we've got in excess in the salary category there because we've not had a position filled. In general, running down through this, I want to hit the high points. The salaries increase to $7,500. This is a cumulative effect of the adopted salary study, and following that Medicare, Social Security minor adjustments. Health, dental, and vision insurance, we have an increase. Last year, the league had a systems changeover, and the result was that we were late billed for the June of '24 Health, Dental, and Vision into this cycle. So with that effect, this is to cover that changeup. Workers' comp, we did have an increase there based on salaries. Workers' comp usually runs a year behind, and since we had additional positions that were started last year on the park primarily, that has caused an increase in the workers' comp. This covers for that amount, and we have reported current salaries and budgeted expected salaries into them for this year's quote. So hopefully, that'll be a little bit closer. Disability, minor increase there. Consulting, this is up $14,250. This is actually a good thing in a way. The primary here is PTRC is working on updating the ordinances. They had given Bill an estimate of the timeframe and of how much the cycle billing would be. They're actually ahead of schedule such that we did the 25% initial payment. They've been working on it, and they hit the trigger and have sent the bill for the next 50% of the contract. 25% will be on the tail end. We had most of this actually scheduled into next year. So Bill had done an estimate of where we thought they would be, and that was at about $45,000 of production, and actually, they came in at $59,250 under the contract. So they're moving faster than we had anticipated on getting that project done. What this will do is, we increase it now. We already had built into the budget as adopted tonight sufficient consulting to cover that. So actually, we're increasing now. This will end up in an overbudget, or our ability to decrease more than likely on consulting next year. Tax collection fees, that's contractual with the county. The higher our tax collection and the higher volume of dollars we've got, the higher that fee is. So with the growth in the town limits, that can increase the fees. Web hosting, that's inflation and market. Advertising, we have to estimate on advertising, both the amount of advertising we had to do for legal notices this year was increased, and the rate with the sources we use for advertising increased. Miscellaneous, $1,100 on that is to cover the shred events that we've sponsored, that the citizens come out to. Liability up some, that's because of the park. This year, the new sections of the park were fully in service. The customer service fees, 4610 through 4660 is reallocation and coverage of expenses on the water system, giving it finer detail. Security monitoring, it's only $29, but that is a contract, so I'd like to match up to the annual contract fee. Electricity, this is an educated guess. We're fairly close, but electricity usage depends on a lot of factors, but we feel that we need to have a little more cushion. Other utilities, $1,500. Maintenance, we had some additional maintenance in the water system due to some damage. We've gotten some partial payment for those damages in reimbursement and still seeking the remainder. So all of that is fairly normal stuff. Liability insurance, as I talked about, the park section, $1,920, that's primarily dealing with the HFP's opening, and then decreases the water management fee, water fund, that's a readjustment, and then salary in the parks, the decrease. So those are the main items that I'm requesting to adjust the budget.
You also want permission to make adjustments?
And if we want to double that up, I'd also like my annual request to grant the finance officer the authority to adjust the budget through 630 to ensure a balanced budget and report back at the next town council meeting.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the budget amendment as presented, as well as grant the authority requested by the finance officer to continue making adjustments through the end of the fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Snyder, you made the initial motion. Any comments?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
Meter costs, Sam?
Yes, sir.
$10,000. Is that physical water meters that we purchased?
Yes, it goes in as an expense item. It's not purchased, it's expensed when they're installed. We have the inventory on the balance sheet. There's inventory of water meters. We buy them in bulk and store them here, and it looks a little weird because all utility funds, they're enterprise fund. Under enterprise, we must follow pure accrual accounting as opposed to governmental accounting. So we've got the meters, we've already bought them, we've already paid for them. They're on the books as an asset, and then when we transfer them out and they're installed, we have to recognize them in the reporting as an expenditure at that moment.
Okay.
So we've already spent this money, but now the fund is expending it in recognition of calculation of income pursuant to accrual.
Thank you.
And people wonder why I sometimes act a little weird.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just one of the reasons.
Mr. Harton?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Harton?
I never worried about that, Sam. The...no, thank you. I think everything's clear.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-on to the meters, I would have thought the any meter movement would be in the enterprise fund ballot budget?
It is. This adjustment is on a multi-fund-wide basis, and then it'll be drilled down to that level when we record it. It'll show up in the report on the enterprise fund.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. I guess the final thing would be accepting the finance officer's report?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to accept the finance officer's report?
So move.
Is there a second? I'll just make the general request. Is there any discussion? And if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Sam, I have one question.
Uh huh.
How do you collect 122% of 100%? I mean, I'm just curious.
What the county does when they prepare their budget, they estimate the revenues, and they allocate it out by Fire District, municipalities, sewer districts, all of that. And so they have a, they give us the number, at the Fire Department, they give us a number of an estimate of how much all the revenues are. They don't drill down and give that information to the town, but pursuant to the agreement to share data, I can access those reports and report it to the town as well. But basically, they estimated how much the motor vehicles were going to be, and they had that in the adopted budget, and when they found more money, that's how it happens.
Just curious.
Oh, it's...
All right. Committee reports. Board, I don't believe, met. Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Good evening. Adrian Eckenrod, 5679 Timber Trace Way, Oak Ridge. I am the co-chair of Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec met on May 15th in person and on Zoom. Kyle Andrews was reappointed to serve on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for another term. We had several projects that have been completed. The Memorial Garden Project, the River Birch Pathway, the spring mulch installation, the regrading work by Barr Construction, the concrete repair work, and the Heritage Farm Park Fields opened on May 5th. The repair work to fix the drainage issue near the Swim Club has begun, and we also reviewed and approved a proposal from the Oak Ridge Lions Club to build a tranquility garden. This location is still to be determined and will be fully funded by the Oak Ridge Lions Club. The Farmhouse Community Center is still waiting on its permanent COA. We have a temporary one issued. It's pending some delays as far as, we have some of the handicap provisions as well as some drainage. The park entrance master plan has been ongoing, and we expect that to be completed near the end of May, so I believe that's been wrapped up. The music in the park, our last event was another success with very large crowds. We have moved where the food trucks are replaced, and this is to better serve and support the large crowds and our vendors. An additional benefit of this new placement is it allows better placement for our alcohol sales and the ID checks that go along with those. We are looking to start a new Music on the Lawn series, which I believe was approved in the new budget, that will be taking place later in the year at the Farmhouse Community Center. And Canon Capers was completed, was another great turnout again this year. And just a reminder of some upcoming events. June 7th, we have the Filipino Summer Festival, and June 14th, as was mentioned, we have the Flag Day and the 250th Anniversary Birthday US Army Celebration at 10:00 a.m., and then later that day, at the amphitheater as well, will be the next Music in the Park with beach music from Special Occasion Band.
I understand we had our first event at the farmhouse, and staff reports it went very well?
We did, yes. We had kind of our soft opening event, first event there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One point. Ashley just texted me and said she wanted you to report on the open house for the...
June 8th?
No.
September.
Oh, September.
Brand opening.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I did, I was waiting here. Thank you. So the Farmhouse Community Center, September 14th is our...
I believe so.
Expected date now?
And a rain date of the 21st.
Right. Yes. Thank you.
Before you leave, at town council, I thought there was also mention of a group doing Shakespeare in the park sometime this summer? Was that, I mean, it was talked about in the council briefing?
Right, there was, I think, essentially, we're kind of waiting to see with the certificate of occupancy that we're waiting on for the Farmhouse Community Center.
Now, this is at the amphitheater.
I think this is a rental, not...
It's a rental.
It doesn't go through Parks and Rec.
It's not, it's just a rental from the Shakespeare. It's not something they're doing specifically.
Right, correct, yes.
Well, I'm glad I asked and got clarified. Thanks.
Finance Committee, I think you can take the rest of the year off for a while, unless you have something you'd like to add. Water Advisory Committee?
Didn't meet.
Did not meet, but we have a special call meeting coming up next Wednesday?
On June the 11th.
Yeah, I think that's Wednesday, isn't it?
That's right, at 1:30 at the conference room.
Okay, great. Historic Preservation?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Schoenfeld. I live at 8501 San Siro Farm Court, right here in Oak Ridge. The HPC held its regularly scheduled meeting March 21st, and they approved a COA for construction of a 3,600-square-foot commercial building on the property located at 8,200 Linville Road. The commission approved historic heritage grant requests for AI Church and the Sanders Blaylock House. The Grant Committee also met to review a request from ORMA for a grant, and there seems to be a lot of interest in the grants right here at the tail end of the fiscal year, but we're still seeing them come in, so we're looking at them. As long as they get their project finished before the end of the fiscal year, we're good. The Historic Oak Ridge Book Committee is in the process of writing the text for the Dust Jacket, and they're preparing to send out the book for copyright and planning to meet with the printer next week. Also, if we go under contract by the end of the fiscal year, before the end of the fiscal year, which is the plan, we should have the books back by the end of October or mid-November.
Excellent.
Any questions?
You said March 21st, but you meant May 21st, right?
Did I? Yes, sorry.
Just for the record.
Yeah, May 21st.
Okay.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Planning Zoning?
Did they meet?
Did, but I don't think we see how to report here. Any cogent details you'd like to share, Sean?
Not this time.
Okay.
We will have, I will be sending out information on two future rezonings we have for this coming June meeting and be the July council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Board of Adjustment did not meet. Mountain to Sea, we're giving them some extra time. Oh. Okay. And take as much time as you need. Oh. Okay. Ann, take as much time as you need.
Hi, I'm Ann Steele, Chair of the MST Committee, 8927 Grove Park Drive in Oak Ridge. We do not hold our regularly scheduled monthly meeting in May due to three out of five of our members being unable to attend. Excuse me. I do have a couple of updates to share with you to keep you all informed. The Eagle Scout Project at the Town Park MST Campsite has been completed. This includes an addition of a picnic table and a box to house a journal for hikers to document their stay and share information with other campers. Also, we have contacted local scout troops in search of an interested scout who is willing to build a bridge in the Carriage Cove Trails. This is a necessary addition to that area that will bring us one step closer to opening the trails on the east side of town. We hope to have a scout claim that project sometime in the next month. Lastly, I've been informed that Brock and his crew should have some time soon to work on the parking lot for the trailhead for the Carriage Cove Trails. At the town council meeting held in June of 2024, council approved a motion for the MST Committee to refrain from development of the trail on the easement in the Ashford subdivision for 17 months. We were to report a status check-in at 12 months and again at 17 months. During this time, we were asked to refrain from development and construction activity on this easement. And it was also requested that the easement be allowed accessed only by town staff and the members of the MST Committee. And also, we were asked not to have it open to the public. This town council meeting today marks the 12-month point, and I'm prepared to report the update as requested by council. Before I get to that, I would also like to take a moment to read the approved Oak Ridge MST Committee mission statement. I feel that it is important that we all have the same information about our goals. So, the Oak Ridge Mountains to Sea Trail Committee, our mission is to plan and coordinate the development of the Mountains to Sea Trail through Oak Ridge. The mission will be accomplished in multiple ways, including number one, working with landowners, neighborhood groups, town staff, trail users, and other governmental agencies to identify the primary Mountains to Sea Trail corridor through Oak Ridge and to identify appropriate trail spurs and connections. Number two, identifying appropriate trail surfaces and design based on environmental factors and user preferences. Number three, advocating, promoting, and serving as the public face for the Mountains to Sea Trail in Oak Ridge. Number four, managing and recruiting volunteers and design/construction professionals as needed for the planning and construction of the trail. Number five, developing a plan for trail maintenance, future connections, and ancillary improvements such as trailheads, kiosks, signage, et cetera. And number six, reporting to town council monthly. Thank you for that little moment there. Okay, currently, we are committed, but small group of five volunteers, six if you include our MST Task Force Leader who lives in Summerfield. We have worked diligently through the years to adhere to our mission, and we plan to continue to do so moving forward. At council's request, the MST Committee has not developed or constructed any trail on the Ashford easement. Our focus has been on maintaining the existing Headwaters Trail and on building trails in the Pemberley and Carriage Cove areas. Over the past year, we were able to secure a location for a trailhead for these trails that we are very excited about. As you are all probably aware, we have completed a trail that reaches to the Summerfield property line. We are open for discussion with neighboring towns to help and also assist in moving this project forward. As for our work, as it pertains specifically to the Ashford subdivision easement, we have continued to brainstorm ideas, review maps, talk through suggestions and possibilities in search of alternate routes. Be assured that we have looked at a variety of options as we would like to continue to see trail being built in Oak Ridge. Our committee members also work with the state MST organization, as well as other local nonprofit trail and open space groups to foster relationships in order to continue the progress we have made in Oak Ridge. We feel that maintaining these relationships allows us to learn about all facets of planning and building trails so that we can create the best possible trails in Oak Ridge. It may not be specifically stated in the mission statement, but I hope you all inferred that our goals include helping to foster community, to create connections, and to provide opportunities for people to safely experience nature. We want to provide a place for people to get outside, go for a walk, decompress, and do something that does not involve staring at a screen. We want this for our community now as well as in the future. We are hopeful that we, with council's continued support, guidance, and help, that we can achieve this. We understand that planning and building trails can be a long, drawn-out process, but we feel that it is worth the effort.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All the additional detail.
So, have, has MST met with the Ashford and Bear Creek people?
Not to my knowledge, no.
That was specifically one of the things that the council had asked MST to do. Is that, there a plan to do that?
Everything from my understanding was that there are legal matters involved and to not be doing that. Maybe I misunderstood. I don't recall that as part of the motion.
Don't recall that as part of the motion.
I mean, I know that we encouraged dialogue, but I know that we also very clearly stated that there's ongoing, there are ongoing legal issues, and that we didn't want to put the committee members in the middle of that. Is that correct, Bill?
I don't remember that. I don't remember that. Mr. Bruce, can you recall? I don't have the motion in hand, I apologize. We probably should have had that.
Well, I assume you had the motion. I mean, you read the motion.
Yeah.
That was the motion.
I think it basically focused on trying the best to make it so that the trail goes towards Summerfield, we connect to Summerfield, and it sounds like you've been trying to work very hard on that. I don't know what you would do with the trail easement over there, because it's up to council whether or not we get rid of the easement or not. So, there's nothing really for you guys to do. You don't have the authority or the ability to say, hey, we're gonna get rid of the easement. It's our, it's our, it's our call on whether or not easement comes or goes. So, I don't see where we would want MST to get in the middle of that.
Right.
So, I'm not sure what was going on, but I guess we decided we would vote on it again in December?
To extend it another year for 23 months? Council has a purview to do anything we want at any moment. So, at any moment, if there was support to do something with the easement, we could do it at any moment. But I believe we basically said we're gonna ask the MST to try their best to move forward with getting the MST through Oak Ridge, and that basically, the easement, we understood the easement is something that is gonna take a lot of money to do something with anyway, because we have to build a fairly significant bridge.
There is a bridge that's necessary to cross.
So, again, I believe the onus is on us as far as anything that's gonna happen with the easement. We're not, MST has, to me, I'm not asking MST to do anything as far as the easement's concerned unless we tell them to move forward or don't do, we told them, don't do anything.
So, why don't we?
And if we want them to do something, we'll tell them to do something. But as far as I'm concerned, MST's doing what we told them to do.
Yes, we did ask them to look at alternate routes.
They did.
And thank you for doing that.
So, why do we ask to come back in 12 months?
Right.
For a report.
I mean, what was the, what was your...
They're reporting on their progress to forward the MST through Oak Ridge. And then the specific information I remember was, do your best to get it over to Summerfield, and they have gotten it over to Summerfield. So, the next step is, can we get Summerfield to let us go forward? So, I think that MST's done exactly what we've asked them to do.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not agreeing, but I just don't think that was the motion that was made. It was specifically about Ashford.
Yeah. So, you... Well, like I said, I wouldn't want MST, I mean, I can talk to them, but I don't see what they would do, because it's up to us to do anything as far as easements are concerned.
Okay, I'm not complaining. I'm just, I just think that's what the motion was that, I don't know if any of the rest of the...
Well, I guess we all have a slightly different memory.
You read the motion. Where did you get that from? From the minutes?
I reread the minutes from last year's town council meeting.
That sounded accurate to me.
Yeah. It was, the whole motion that was made, it was, that's what you read.
The report back and what's been done over the past year.
Okay, I'm good, as long as that's what it said.
That's the understanding.
Yeah, I'm good.
Another question, looking at the minutes from MST, there's conversations now going on about extending the trails on the northern loop. So, are we meeting with neighbors on, on those potentials?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Right now, it's kind of a big-picture idea. We haven't gotten down to property by property where we're ready to get in touch with any property in ours. It's just one of those ideas of a different way to go.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Conservation easement?
Didn't meet.
Okay. I believe there is, I'm sorry. Whoop. Oh, your special events? Okay, I thought maybe we jumped the gun. Special events, please.
Patty's on a well-deserved vacation. My name is Courtney Harton, 5901 Pepper Road. Our Memorial Day ceremony was held last Monday and was a wonderful morning of remembrance. Our guest speaker was Congresswoman Virginia Fox, who gave a very moving talk on remembering our lost veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice. We're very thankful for the following participants. The Oak Ridge Baptist Band, led by Jim Craig, Craigor, Danny Yanus, who sang the National Anthem, and Ann Schneider, who gave the invocation. Presentation of Colors, Pledge of Allegiance, and the honoring of the 250th anniversary of the Army, Navy, and Marines by the Scouts from Troop 219. Thank you to Matt, Matt Slinger, for coordinating the Scouts and having so many of the other troops attend the ceremony. Thank you to all the town council members, Bill Bruce, and the members of the community who attended. Update on the Veterans Honor Green, construction has been held up by weather, and there were few permitting issues, but could start soon. The third order of pavers was received. It's , they've been done and will be installed in coordination with the construction project. So, the upcoming 4th of July Kids Parade is from 10:00 AM to noon on the 4th. Planning continues for this event. It includes bike decorations for the kids, free ice cream from the, to the moon and back frozen treats, cookies and water from Lowe's Foods, hot dogs provided by Southern Foods, a bike raffle and giveaways from Confident Kids Pediatric Dentistry. The local scouts will be participating in and leading the parade, and we hope everyone can join us for a fun morning. Any questions?
Great job as always. Thank you. Next section, second period of public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, just come up, state your name and address, and three minutes is yours.
Thank you. Adrian Eckenrod, 5679 Timber Trace Way. I just wanted to give an update on the Farmhouse Community Center, make sure I had the most accurate information in the record. So, the opening house is currently scheduled for 9:14 with the rain date of September 21st. And so, right now, the Farmhouse Community Center, with that extended time, it's allowing us to offer soft rentals, so we can learn how the operations of the building are working, as well as evaluating how my rec, which is where you would make a reservation for the Farmhouse Community Center, as well as other amenities, such as the shelters at the park are done through, and to see how that's being handled for all the FCC reservation requests as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else who speak, public comment? If not, we'll close that. And since we're gonna have a closed session, we're gonna do council comments now. Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
I was given the opportunity to attend the BAP's Charities Walk last weekend at Heritage Farm Park, a great community event. They were very appreciative of the park staff and especially called out Brock's assistance with getting everything done. Extended our, their appreciation to Brock. I wanted to do that publicly. Really good job, and what a great turnout. The weather cooperated, so everything was wonderful there. The only other thing I have is, if you're not aware of it, Burlington just completed their pickleball sports courts, and I'll be gathering their data for our July meeting to point out once again that pickleball is continuing to grow. There's a Greensboro tournament coming up here soon that expects to generate about $2 million over a weekend in revenue because of the tournament activities. Pickleball's growing. People in this community are interested in the sports courts. They wanna see something besides walking trails for adults to do and for them to do with their kids. And I think that we are doing a disservice if we're not moving that forward fast. Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
First of all, congratulations again to the four people that won the Strength and Honor Fund from the Fire Department, and there's all these. Also, I said earlier, but from what I could see, the Finance Committee, working with staff, did an exceptional job. That seemed to be a very, very smooth process this year. And we continue to have good, solid budgets that we can live with. I think everybody on the town council would like to see pickleball advanced, but if we're gonna hold the tax rate down, we're gonna have to practice patience more than pickleball.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Yeah, it was an honor. Thank you for awarding those, doing the official honors tonight for at least two of the recipients of the Strength and Honor Scholarship. It was an honor to help with that, and I believe it's the 20th anniversary of the, wait, what's his title? Sergeant Rusoli's death. A very moving story and incredible that, that the gifts keep on giving to new young people. And speaking of young people, this evening I had the pleasure of awarding a $5,000 scholarship to a student at Northwest High School from the Merchants of Oak Ridge. I was the Chair of the Scholarship Committee this year together with Brian Albrecht of To the Moon and Back and Johnna Clark of Everyday Excellence, a leadership training coach. We awarded it to Marcus Woodell. He stood out among many applicants as having the kind of academic and personal achievements and demonstrate, that were demonstrated in his high school career, and outstanding leadership potential. That was exciting. And a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of presenting a $2,000 scholarship award to a junior at Oak Ridge Military Academy to continue her high school education. The previous scholarship goes for university college costs. To, but at Orma, it was to Olivia Nicholson, who is a rising star at the Oak Ridge Military Academy. We didn't know it, but she's being appointed battalion commander. So, over the last three years, we've picked the up-and-coming battalion commander each time. So, it's just a pleasure to help these amazing young people. I also want to comment just a little more about this first event at the Farmhouse Community Center. It was a baby shower, and I happened to be on the invite list. And first of all, the interior, if you haven't seen it, give me a call, I'll take you through. But the interior of the farmhouse is just so beautiful. It is such a transformation. But when you hold an event there, you transform it even further. So, this was, you know, kind of typical baby shower stuff, but gorgeous, tablecloths, decorations, a beautiful spread of food, and it was such a success, and everyone clearly loved being in the space. I also want to thank everyone who came out for Memorial Day and just please come out for Flag Day as well. These are great community events, and I'm grateful to the DAR for organizing the Flag Day. I also attended the work session of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners about, with Williams Transco, and it was just really fascinating to hear from Williams all that they do for safety. And I'd be happy to share the details of that or the links to their presentation to anyone who's interested. And finally, many thanks, as always, to our dedicated and amazing staff. You're the ones who make it all happen together with the help of our outstanding committees. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
My assumption, you're gonna mention the Blood Mobile.
Yes.
In addition, on the 9th, Sam, correct me, I think it's at 7:30, it's the Annual Fire Department Board, not Board Meeting, but the Annual Fire Department Fire Department Board, not Board Meeting, but the annual Fire Department Meeting at 7:30 on Monday, the ninth. So, please join us, and you'll find out more about your fire department.
And there's usually ice cream involved. As always, I encourage you to give blood this Monday. The Oak Ridge Methodist Church will have a blood drive. I think it starts at 2:00 or 2:30. I always forget the time. Bobby Yarborough feeds you really well. They take good care of you. There's a raffle for four $50 gift cards you give, so if you're able to donate, please do. Like I said, I want to emphasize it even more, because I used to be able to give. I'm no longer able to give because of the medication I'm on, but I appreciate people like Mr. Harton that donate from time to time. I've convinced my wife to donate, so she's donating on a regular basis. So, if you're able to donate, please do. It's a way to make a difference in three people's lives that you'll maybe never meet. The other thing I want to remind you is, two things coming up. Intersection construction starting. If you drive through the intersection, you may have seen erosion control fencing going up and some final utility work. NC DOT says that work's going to start in earnest in June. So, things are going to change. So, you know, we need to get out of the autopilot mode that we typically go through that intersection. So, keep an eye out for changes in traffic patterns, keep an eye out for workers. By the same token, make sure you keep visiting our local businesses. Sometimes when there's road construction, the local businesses suffer. So, please make the effort to visit our local businesses as you can. I did have the pleasure of speaking at the Memorial Day Ceremony. It was a very nice ceremony. The Special Events does a great job every year, so I was very thankful, appreciative of the thing. Lions Club, I don't have the recipient's name offhand, but the Lions Club also issued a $2,500 scholarship that we focus on community service, and I'm always amazed with the community service that the young people do. Anytime anybody says something about this generation or that generation doesn't, isn't interested in doing good things, I say, "That's not true." Every generation I've ever been exposed to, there's just as many people that want to do good things. So, this generation's no, this young generation coming out of high school is no different. So, okay. With that, we're going to go into a closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer, employee, or to hear, investigate, and complain, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee pursuant to NCGS 143-13, 318-11-A-6. I was told I was supposed to read that stuff. If that's not true, I'll not do it next time. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Also, to discuss a legal matter. Is there a motion pursuant to the same statute?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
...
And from closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, the decision out of the closed session, I'll make the motion. The motion is to adjust the town manager's salary to 141,625, starting with the July fiscal year. Is there a second?
Second.
Any...I don't believe we have any discussion on this one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
So it's four to one. Okay, with that, any other business? I don't believe so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, the other thing is, the legal matter we discussed, we took no action. Okay, so...so there's been a motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.